Do we have a moment of silence to keep our troops and our law enforcement on prayers that they come home safe? Thank you. Let's move to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The notice of this meeting is going to be filed with the meetings act NJ SA and going for a 10 if they comply with the charter and conditions of this meeting.
Vote call.
Fielder Armwood.
Here.
Fielder Kenny. Fielder Hopple. Fielder Narra.
Here.
Fielder Tamara.
Here.
Fielder Valenti.
Here.
Fielder Director Rios.
Here. Do you have some running issues?
Yes, first is recognizing volunteer of the year George Mubares. Next is recognizing farm over here, Elias Olivera, and next is Berkeley in August 12, 2017 is Miller Friday.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Second.
Motion by Fielder Valenti, second by Fielder Tamara. Vote call.
Fielder Armwood.
Yes.
Fielder Kenny. Fielder Narra. Yes. Fielder Tamara.
Yes.
Fielder Valenti.
Yes.
Fielder Director Rios.
Yes. You have a presentation, right?
No.
Correspondents?
Each wielder is required to list the correspondent received by the court officers in our last meeting. This correspondence will be cut unfiled. The motions will serve as a source of reference.
Is there a motion to accept the correspondence?
Second.
Motion by Fielder Valenti, second by Fielder Deputy Director Tamara. All favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Minutes for approval.
Orders chosen fielder during the meeting, June 15, 2017, and seven o'clock PM.
Is there a motion to approve?
No.
Second.
Motion by Fielder Valenti, second by Deputy Director Tamara. Vote call.
Fielder Armwood.
Yes.
Fielder Kenny. Fielder Narra. Here. Fielder Tamara.
Yes.
Fielder Valenti. Here. Fielder Director Rios.
Yes. Ordinance.
Notice of this public hearing is published in the Homebrew Tribune on June 23, 2017. This public hearing was authorized by a meeting of the board of chosen freeholders held on June 15, 2017.
Clerk will read ordinance number 17-003, part time only.
In ordinance authorizing the guarantee by the county of Middlesex, state of New Jersey, county guaranteed revenue bonds, educational services commission of New Jersey project, series 2017, and the Middlesex County improvement authority in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $15 million in bonds issued for the purpose of financing a portion of the educational services commission of New Jersey project in the town of Piscataway consenting to the undertaking and financing of such project by the authority and authorizing public hearing there on July 20, 2017, at 7:00 PM and authorizing publication now.
At this time, I declare the public hearing open. If anyone has any comments. Please state your name and address.
Charles Cradville from New Brunswick, New Brunswick Today. I'd like to just understand a little more about what this project is, where in Piscataway it's located, and why the price tag is $15 million.
Yes, under the Moses Commission Education is located on Stellon Road in Piscataway. It's a facility that we have partnered with over the last 25, 30 years. About 20 years ago, there was a capital investment on building a new facility, education facility there to handle education programs for the Middlesex County. This project is an expansion of both classrooms and conference room space to support their operations facilities and relationship with market and city. And it's an educational program that's addressed especially students that are normal in the school system that they must really handle at this point.
Understood. So it's classrooms and conference room space.
Correct.
Do you have any analysis of those? How many classrooms?
We do, but I can get that figured.
Okay, I'm sure. Is it more classrooms than conference space or more conference space than classrooms?
I don't know, but I can get that to you. We'll get that to you tomorrow.
Okay. It's a lot of money, $15 million. I'd like to understand what the value proposition is.
What I would suggest, what I suggest if you have opportunity, your markets of middle school should visit the facility and programs they offer. It's a tremendous asset to many families in Middlesex County where their children cannot attend most school system, provide their education, that hopefully brings them back when they're bigger than high school and beyond, and also provide career opportunities for where they wouldn't possibly have that opportunity. But my strong suggestion is if you go and visit the facility, you can see exactly the operations, and I think you'd be very impressed with the work they've done behalf of the residents of Moses County.
It's a great idea. I'll do that. Thank you.
Anyone else in the public?
Move closer, please.
Motion by Deputy Director Tamara, second by Fielder Valenti. Anybody opposed? Motion carries. There are motion to adopt ordinance number 17-003.
No.
Set. Motion by Fielder Valenti, second by Fielder Narra. Vote call.
Fielder Armwood.
Yes.
Fielder Kenny. Fielder Narra. Yes. Fielder Tamara.
Yes.
Fielder Valenti. Here. Fielder Director Rios.
Yes. Reports of fielders. Fielder Ken Armwood.
Thank you, Fielder Armwood. From the Middlesex County Office of Culture and Heritage, on Saturday, July 22, from 10:00 AM to 11:30 AM, join us at the Lodge in Thompson Park for a free hands-on workshop where we will be creating art in the park with art educator Lindsay Urban. Text CULTURE to 56512 on your smartphone for a listing of all events. From the Rutgers Cooperative Extension of Middlesex County, on Saturday, July 22, from 11:00 AM until 3:00 PM, there will be an open house and garden field day at the Earth Center at Davidson Mill Pond Park, 42 Reva Avenue in South Brunswick, which will include a variety of lectures, garden tours, tasting Jersey fresh produce, and music by Fire Dog. Ring date is Sunday, July 23. And from the Middlesex County Office of Workforce Development, Amazon has announced that it is opening a distribution facility in Cranberry, New Jersey at the end of August. The Office of Workforce Development is coordinating several hiring events. Amazon will be hiring between 600 and 1,000 people for full-time jobs that pay between $13 an hour and $14 an hour. Text WORKFORCE to 56512 on your smartphone to receive the latest information about the Amazon hiring events, and that concludes our report. Thank you.
Thank you. Fielder Charlie Kenny?
Thank you, Fielder Director. I have a report here on our county parks, open space, and it seems many people earlier in the month took advantage of what the county has to offer. I guess they were restricted from going to other places, so during the Fourth of July holiday, they took advantage of what Middlesex County had. So while the state of New Jersey was shutting down its parks, forests, and historic sites, the county of Middlesex had a banner Fourth of July at our county parks. 2,000 people attended the final shows of Legally Blonde, musical at the Stephen J Capestro Theater in Roosevelt Park, and received free health screenings from JFK Hospital. Over 7,500 people enjoyed picnics at our 18 county parks and recreation facilities. Four different county parks hosted nearly 30,000 visitors who enjoyed fireworks displays in Woodbridge, Perth Amboy, South Amboy, Highland Park, New Brunswick, and Monroe Township. And having been at some of them, I would almost guess that that number is on the low side of how many people actually came out for our fireworks. Hikers and bird watchers enjoyed our over 30 miles of park and maintained trails throughout our 8,000 acres of conservation areas and preserves. Vote on voters, forced onto the Raritan River from Thomasin Park, Manalapan Lake, and Thompson Park, while anguished at Manalapan Lake, Roosevelt Park Lake, and Davidson Mill Pond. All in all, a wonderful holiday weekend enjoyed by residents at our Middlesex County parks. Crowds have been flocking to our summer shows at our theater Roosevelt Park, Stephen J Capestro Theater, and our first show of Legally Blonde, which had over 10,000 people come out to see production, which was a great production. I had the opportunity to go see it, as I know all the other freeholders did. It was really good. And on top of that, I just want to take a moment. We received word back from some of the residents had run into some county employees, and they passed the word on to us acknowledging the great work being done by our rangers and our staff that are out at the place in getting people into the park and out of the park in a very timely and efficient manner. And I just want to pass that on to Rick, and we can pass it on to Kevin Lawrence and the rest of the employees, the compliments that were received. It's always great when people acknowledge the work being done by our county employees. Our current show, West Side Story, has already drawn over 8,000 people with three shows left to go. If you miss these two shows, then don't miss Mary Poppins, which runs from August 2 to August 11. Some other projects that we have going on, we have million and painting projects that will be going on later this month into August in South Plainfield and Denell. And I also want to thank the painting crews that are out there working, because I know it's very hot out, and it's even hotter when you're playing around Nashville. So I thank them for their efforts and everybody else, and that's all I have tonight, Director. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Fielder Chantinere.
Thank you, Director. From our environmental and recycling divisions, tomorrow, Friday, July 21, there will be an event at the Middlesex County Vocational and Technical School, which is located at 21 Sutton's Lane in Piscataway. Now, this event will be from noon to 6:00 PM, and it's open to all Middlesex County residents to drop off materials such as paint, herbicides, pesticides, and other household hazardous waste. The next day, Saturday, July 22, from 9:00 AM to noon, there will be another shred event, and this will be held at Spoxwood High School, located at 105 Summer Hill Road. Both of these services are provided free to all Middlesex County residents. And if anyone has any questions and they need further information on either event, please check the county's website or call 732-745-4170. The offices of emergency management and preparedness and the Middlesex County Prosecutor's Office have begun training sessions on bleeding control for the injured, otherwise known as ECON. This training can be applied in any situation where someone is bleeding profusely and emergency services have yet to arrive. A total of 12 training sessions have been scheduled over the next several weeks, and these will be offered to all first responders, including law enforcement, fire, and emergency medical services, to teach these responders how to deliver basic trauma care and bleeding control techniques. Upon successful completion of training, each responder will be issued a first aid kit containing all the materials necessary for appropriate ECON response. The trainings and the first aid kits are fully funded through grants the county has received. The annual County Environmental Health Act, otherwise known as CEHA, there's an audit conducted by, because of this, there's an audit conducted by the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, and these also include representatives from the air, solid waste, pesticides, and right-to-no programs. This audit was conducted and completed on July 7 of this year. The audit included activities for the 2016 fiscal year, which starts July 1, 2015, and runs through July 30 of 2016. The audit covered the administration of CEHA activities as well as air and iodine programs, solid waste, safe drinking water, hazmat, noise, pesticides, and right-to-no programs. And the results were quite good. Middlesex County received high accolades for all areas relating to the required mandate of the CEHA program, as well as exceeding the mandatory number of inspections required by the grants. Middlesex County was also complimented and praised on the quality of its reporting documents and the promptness of submission of these records. The staff were informed that this is not the case for all counties, so we have quite a lot to be proud of. This board commends and praises all the efforts of our inspection divisions, and we just encourage them to keep up the excellent work. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Fielder Narra. Fielder Deputy Director Charlie Tamara.
Thank you, Director, and I'm really happy to report that yesterday we broke ground at the intersection for a new light on Woodland Avenue and O tree road in Edison in South Plainfield. This project will ease a lot of congestion in the area, and more importantly, make the roadway safer for drivers, cyclists, and pedestrians. This $2.2 million project will widen, mill, and pave the roadway, will improve the drains in the area, install new ADA compliant curbs and sidewalks, upgrade the singles, also on Park Avenue and O tree road, and also a delay of O tree and mall entrance. All singles will be coordinated to improve the traffic flow through the area, make it easier for drivers to go through at intersections, and make it easier for pedestrians and cyclists to traverse. This project is part of Moses County's capital improvement master plan of 2017. The project is systematic program to maintain our critical infrastructure. As part of the master plan planning, we assess our roads, our bridges, sports fields, buildings, educational facilities, and parks. We do this all to ensure the safety and well-being of our residents, our employers, and those who commute into the county for work. So I want to thank my freeholder colleagues and our county staff and our municipal partners in Edison, South Plainfield. Each town contributed over $200,000 to the project to make it this a reality. And I had the opportunity to go to both places this year, and it's remarkable. They're really fabulous. But I also want to thank my colleagues on the board, who we came up with the idea for the last few years to invite veterans to our shows. And so far this year, the four shows that the veterans were invited, there was 212 veterans and their families, and active service members that we've had 42, and that's a really bad so far. So I want to thank the board for allowing this to happen and allow them to enjoy a night under the stars watching our place. Thank you.
Thank you. Fielder Black Peter Valenti.
Thank you, Fielder Director. First, I want to commend Fielder Kenny and his department of Parks and Recreation for the outstanding performers that I saw at West Side Story. They could have gone on the Broadway, is that good? And could have left down on that stage. So congratulations.
I'd like to take credit, but I would give the actors and everybody else credit.
From the Department of Community Services, the annual Moses County Senior Citizens Art Contest is currently underway. I encourage everyone to stop by the Studio Art Gallery of Moses County College for plenty of art center, which is 2600 Woodbridge Avenue, Lethal Zone, to view the entries featuring work in 11 different categories for both professional and non-professional artists. The exhibit is open through Friday, August 10. All first place winners on the county council will move on to the New Jersey State Senior Art Contest in the fall. Additional information on the exhibit is available by calling the Office of Beijing and disabled services at 732-745-4267. Also, please mark your calendars and save the date for the September 28, 2017, Middlesex County Mental Health and Addiction Recovery Conference, a free event, the recognition of National Recovery Month. The conference will feature opening remarks from Senator Joseph Attali, keynote address by Dr. T. N. Dayton, and presentations from other leading providers. The event will be held in the Moses County Fire Academy. Online registration will be available soon through a link on the Wellspring Center for Prevention website. End of here on my report, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Kelso, any resolutions to be in?
There are none.
Any resolutions to be amended?
There are none.
Any resolutions to be held?
There are none.
Any resolutions to be voted?
There are none.
This time I open up the meeting to the public. Are any resolutions listed? State your name and address. I mean, I have five minutes.
Yes, your name, Charles Cradville from New Brunswick, New Brunswick Today. I'll begin with the very first one, this DDO Disturbination Commission appointment. Can you tell me, how much does this position pay? Oh, hang on. Hold on to your position. Moving on to 1051, can you tell me, you saw this expense for the cartridge of voting machines, poll books, and related election material, what do you got, Director?
That's to warehouse our voting machines, and that's to bring them to each of the individual polling places, as well as the books and available supplies that are necessary to conduct the election.
So delivery from the warehouse. It says, "For the extra school election." Would that be the New Brunswick?
School election, which is an extra.
I'm not sure who had a school election this year off the top of my head, but if it was New Brunswick, if New Brunswick did have one, that's included there.
We had two?
Yeah. And then when there are the extra school elections, the schools reimburse us for those expenses.
Thank you. I'll just take a quick moment to say that I think that the county needs to look into getting new voting machines. I know it's a big expense, but I think that the board of elections agrees. There's a need for that. 1060, can I just find out what type of equipment this is? Does various police and homeland security equipment and supplies, are there any weapons? What type of equipment are we talking about?
It's mostly safety equipment and uniforms, but it does not include weapons at all.
1099, the amendment to the county future wastewater service area. Can you just tell me what changed, that they're being made, what areas?
I can answer that, Charles. That's an application by the Senator Stoffler Church, he sponsored, and are seeking to develop their church and parish facilities within a non-service area. And they're making an amendment proposal to get into the service area based on the county's about the map.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kelso. 1109, can you just tell me about these grants? What are the grants for?
These are grants for programs and services that are offered by the state, the Georgia Playhouse, the Cultural Center, similar to what was requested last year, and consistent with the programs and services that we assisted in funding for 2016, if we are continuing to do these activities.
Thank you. 1178, what's the nature of this agreement with Ocean County for housing of juveniles? Is this for juvenile detention center?
Yes, as you know, with a youth service facility, we have shared service relations with the lawn, with Mercer, and with Ocean in order to handle some of their housing of their juveniles. This is just a continuation of use of our facilities and the shared service agreement.
Okay. I didn't know Ocean was involved. How long's they?
I want to say a little, I'm not sure, so I'll get that to you.
Sure. 1181, what is the cancellation of the, first cancellation of the grant? Why is that happening?
Yeah, when those funds are not used, we need to cancel and return it to the federal government. So it's simple as that.
So the county's going to return $315,000 to the federal?
No, that's not the way it works. They give us the money as reimbursement, so we just got to cancel the part of the award, and I don't get to reimburse that.
Okay. Do you know the amount that you're canceling? Is it $315,000 canceled?
No, that was the initial provisional grant. I don't have a part of it, but I can get it for you.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you. And then this is the last one I want to ask about, kind of make a point there. 1201, let's see, confirmation for seven different employees to attend the Middlesex County Prevention Education Summit. And I don't understand why, especially since this event already happened, why these employees are not identified. I don't think that a prevention education summit should be top secret, right? That's not a top secret confidential thing.
It's for the security and safety of the officers that the prosecutor feels are the best and safest.
Can you tell me what they're preventing?
Thank you.
What is it?
Thank you.
Anything else in the public?
Top secret.
Move ahead and close the vote position.
Second.
Motion by Deputy Director Tamara, second by Fielder Valenti. All favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Okay. Are there any freeholders that need to vote separately?
Fielder Director, I'd like to have number 17-1148, separate, per separate vote.
Anyone else?
I do too. 17-1148.
I have one at 17-1053. Okay, Mr. Kelso?
Yes, Fielder Director, a motion would definitely in order to adopt a consent agenda consisting of resolution number 17-1039 through resolution 17-1210 excluding resolutions 1148 and 1053 to be voted upon separately.
Is there a motion?
Motion, sir.
Motion by Fielder Valenti, second by Deputy Director Tamara. Vote call.
Fielder Armwood.
Yes.
Fielder Kenny. Fielder Narra.
Yes.
Fielder Tamara.
Yes.
Fielder Valenti.
Yes.
Fielder Director Rios.
Yes.
Now the appropriate director to consider, the resolution excluded by both Fielder Valenti and Fielder Armwood, and that's resolution 1148.
Is there a motion?
Go ahead.
Certainly.
Motion by Deputy Director Tamara, second by Fielder Kenny. Vote call.
Fielder Armwood.
Present, not voting.
Fielder Kenny. Fielder Narra.
Yes.
Fielder Tamara.
Yes.
Fielder Valenti.
Present, not voting.
Fielder Director Rios.
Yes.
And finally, with now the appropriate, excuse me, to consider, resolution 1053, which was excluded by Fielder.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Fielder Armwood, second by Fielder Kenny. Vote call.
Fielder Armwood.
Yes.
Fielder Narra. Fielder Tamara.
Present, not voting.
Fielder Valenti. Here. Fielder Director Rios.
Yes. This time I open a meeting up to the public. Anyone want to speak? Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Members of the board, Deputy Directors, Director, my name is Junior Armero with Waterwatch, Environment, and Climate, the organization, based out of here in New Brunswick, New Jersey. Today, I have provided you all with a resolution that the State Assembly will be considering. It is Assembly Resolution 280. Sponsors are Assemblyman Danielson, who represents New Brunswick in the State Assembly, and also Assemblyman Ciderelli, who y'all may know as the contender in the primary for governor on Republican side. So we have here a bipartisan resolution opposing the Williams Transco fracked gas pipeline and compressor station, gas pipeline proposed for Old Bridge, Sayerville, and the Raritan Bay, and the gas compressor station proposed for our friends adjacent to us here in Franklin Township. Since the last time I believe we reassessed this issue, we have had an educational forum down on the bay shore part of this project, proposed project, inviting residents from Old Bridge and Sayerville constituents here in Middlesex County. And those great successes, people came out to the event, over 130 people, and this resolution was also proposed, and definitely appreciated. Assemblyman Danielson's leadership closing it. One thing to note is it does mention the gas pipeline part of this project, and also we appreciate the board and Director Rios's action in sending that letter to FERC mentioning this project, but that letter did only encompass the compressor station part of this project, and a major part of this project is the pipeline, again, 23 miles through the Raritan Bay into New York City, a pipeline that, whose gas is not even being supplied to residents of New Jersey, because we don't want anyways, it's dirty energy, methane, 20 to 80 times more powerful attracting the sun's heat than carbon dioxide. So I just wanted to, I just wanted to, you know, look back at this board here, perhaps for other members, I'm not sure, I did not check, but that banned fracking, and was the first county in New Jersey to ban fracking at a time when not even some environmental groups saw the dangers of fracking. So I would just implore you all to consider opposing both the pipeline and compressor station part of this project. I have also included an elected official pledge that I believe every member of the body has had for at least over a week now. Basically, we need to disincentivize these projects. We need to disincentivize these fracked gas, dirty energy projects, and are asking the board today to join Senator Loretta White, who is the Majority Leader in the Senate here in New Jersey, Senator Attali, who represents Middlesex County, the whole township of Franklin Township, and the mayor that have signed on to this 100% renewable energy pledge, members from Piscataway, members from Highland Park District, the members of this body, Director Rios, Deputy Director, to support a 100% renewable energy transition for New Jersey, for Moses County, lead the way in a time when we have a presidential administration and a gubernatorial administration that deny the science and climate change. So once again, thank you again for listening, and I hope that we can have a strong sort of action on this. Thank you.
Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Tina Weishouse, 143 North Fifth Avenue, Highland Park. I was here about a month ago when we were speaking about the pipeline. And so I came back to find out if there had been any further discussion by the board to make a stronger statement in opposition to the pipeline. Mr. Romero just spoke, I think, very eloquently about the situation now. There is this resolution in the legislature, in the state legislature, and this pledge. I think the resolution gives excellent reasons why it is a very dangerous pipeline, very specific to this situation, and I think adequate reason why you should reject it, why you should come out making a positive statement to oppose this pipeline. But in addition, I think that everybody on the board should read in the New York Magazine the lead article, which is titled "The Doomed Earth Catalog", because it has been the most read article in New York Magazine's history, and it describes scientifically the impacts of climate change, like in the next ten years, in the next twenty years. We're not talking a century anymore. We're talking about impacts that are that dramatic. And we have a president that pulled up of the Paris Climate Court. We have mayors and governors that have stepped up, and we need you to step up. We need you. I mean, our children, our grand, we need you to step up. There's no wishy-washy at this point. It's happening now, and it will wipe out humanity. It will make this planet uninhabitable for not just all the species that are facing mass extinction that they're facing now, but for us. We're going to be unable to live on this planet. So this is not something that we should be thinking about maybe for the future. This is a pledge that says, let's do it now and join Jerry Brown, join, you know, all the governors, join Gail Grill Midler in Highland Park and the mayor of North Brunswick. And I didn't check the list, but I think there are probably a lot more mayors even in this county right now that have signed on since I last looked. So that pipeline is an example of a dirty fossil fuel project that will kill us. You need to take a position. So that's my statement. I do want to ask whether there's been any further discussion amongst the freeholders on this issue.
The only thing I can say is that we've discussed it and matter of factly that we just passed a resolution tonight in supporting the use of reusable energy that we just passed, adopted tonight. And at this point, the only thing I can tell you is that we'll read your information that you or Junior presented to us and then see if we whatever go to that stuff.
Okay, read the article in New York Magazine. It's worth reading.
I can't read one from New York.
No, New York Magazine, not the New Yorker.
Please state your name and address and you have five minutes.
Susan Gutwill, two twenty-four Valentine Street in Highland Park. And I'm here also to ask you, really beg you, to live in reality in terms of the danger of what the pipeline and the pipelines transport fossil fuels will do to all of us right now. I mean, the air is already so dangerous, people have asthma. It's, when are we going to really wake up and take a stand against the kind of energy, fossil fuel energy and these dangerous pipelines that we could stand up to and make a real difference at this time? But it is irrefutable how much endanger we all and our children and our planet are in. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name and address and you have five minutes.
Shut my timer. I pulled up what you know for you to get a copy of the agreement between the freeholders that the improvement authority with the golf course with a million and a half dollars that you accidentally gave to them. Do you have a copy of it?
Do I have a copy of it here? No.
I got it. Bring it up.
Okay.
We're going to go through it. You're going to find out because you never gave him that money. Legal counsel, I think?
Doesn't matter.
This was given to me by forty thousand freeholders. As you go through this here lease agreement, you're going to find out that they were responsible for all maintenance, any construction, any buildings, any equipment that you purchased with income from the golf course, improvement authority. You had no right to give him that money. As you go down through this, you're going to find out they're only responsible for operating the place and the maintenance of all that stuff that they're responsible for like garbage. And back in, way back in ninety-five for a hundred and eighty-eight thousand, a hundred thousand dollars. I don't know if they paid for it or not. You'll have to check and research that. Because if they didn't, actually, they should have. That's in the agreement. And to go further down through the agreement, they're supposed to have a contract with the golf manager firm. They don't. And that's in the agreement. They must have it. Legal counsel, let me get you scheduled through that and see all this stuff I'm talking about. Then we get down to the area where they're giving free golf. Improvement authority. Are you aware of that?
Free golf?
Yeah.
To who?
The improvement authority would underwrite the free golf with certain individuals. Are you aware of it?
Yeah, there are a number of answers you have to carry out.
That's one of the main reasons they made this agreement. Back in the nineties, they were illegally letting a lot of sixty thousand people a year play for free.
Sixty thousand?
Sixty thousand, it was proven. Also, they were losing over two hundred thousand dollars revenue back then because of that. And the revenue next year, the revenue next year, when they made all the changes, got rid of all the employees in there, the golf course turned around and produced a hundred and thirty thousand rounds of golf, more than doubled. Also, made an increase in the revenue across of two hundred thousand plus. They give it to the improvement authority because it was a high item back then. That's why they made out this agreement so you wouldn't violate any of these things anymore. And they're doing it over again. Certain individuals, I'm sure you played the game of golf, right?
I do occasionally.
Right, and I'm pretty sure you wouldn't ask for any free golf or anything, would you?
No, I would not.
Right. Okay. As we go through this, I also noticed on the internet, the improvement authority claims they purchased the medals golf course for four and a half million dollars back in nineteen ninety-nine. Are you aware of this?
No, I'm not. I wasn't on the freeholder board in nineteen ninety-nine.
So who wants to took medals? The county or the improvement authorities and state board?
It's my understanding that the improvement authority owns it.
Then why are you giving them money? For that golf course? It's crazy. You gave the candy store, you give them the candy besides. There's so many violations in this here agreement that you would have to go through. I can't even go through, it could take an hour to go through all this stuff. The improvement authority is playing golf balance at the Tamarack Golf Course. Another thing, the tennis court, it's been closed for twenty-two years. They put a log down it. The public can't even play tennis there at the Tamarack Golf Course. That is not only a golf course, it's a tennis place in there too for public. They put a log down and closed it for twenty-two years. In twenty-two years, I would like to know how much money they gave back from the revenue on the golf course to the county? Because you were making two hundred thousand dollars the year that you gave it to them. I bet you, I'm sure you didn't make, didn't get paid.
Thank you.
For twenty-two years.
Thank you for your comments, sir.
I'm not done, my timer is...
Your time is up, sir. Thank you.
You got the contract, you got the agreement, you better go through it and find out what I'm talking about.
Thank you.
And if you don't play that, we're getting free golf.
Next. Next.
I don't think of next.
Please state your name and address and you have five minutes. I'm very blurry, I'm in the second word in New Brunswick.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'd like to also urge this panel to reject the pipeline and to have some kind of commitment against it. I'm so strongly opposed, the more I read about it, the more horror stories I read. I mean, we have three, at least three major pipeline leaks in this region. Pennsylvania, New York, New Jersey, major leaks. And around the country, you hear there's leaks every routine, every few months there's some kind of major leak. We're not talking about the compressor stations. That's even worse. Compressor stations, some of them are pushing, they're patrolling through these pipelines at such a high rate of speed, it creates a lot of heat. And those wells are very old because these pipelines have been in existence for thirty or forty years, some of them. And they're a thinner gauge. It's something that you really have to take note of. And one thing about the fossil fuel industry is they're trying to lock us in by building all these pipelines, and it becomes this vicious cycle. The more pipelines they build, the more fracking they have to do to fill these pipelines. And the more fracking they have to, they do, the more pipelines they want to build. And of all the worst possibilities that you could possibly imagine, eventually, eventually does occur with some of these pipelines. And we're not, you know, we're not, this is New Jersey. It's not a very big state. And so we have so many pipelines here already that we're all in some kind of threat. And especially the pipelines that coming in from New York to Lynn and the Pilgrim Pipeline. I mean, that's going to go through the most sensitive wetland areas. And then you have the other ones coming from Pennsylvania, going through the pine lands. And the roads that they have to build to build these pipelines are incredibly destructive to the environment. And that's not even counting what these things are spewing, the CO2, like fifteen tons a day or less, or even more than that in some cases. So what we have to do now is make a serious commitment to stop this because they're trying to lock us in because they see the threat looming about renewable energy. Renewable energy is a threat to them. And we're almost at break even. Renewable energy is almost the same, it costs almost the same now as fossil fuel. Because we see it every day, every week, every month. People are getting solar panels, we're getting new industries that have to do with this kind of amazing development with these fuels, these solar and wind and wave. We don't use wave power, unfortunately, but that's another example of how we can generate energy cheaply. We don't need a huge infrastructure. So instead of locking us into these fossil fuels, which would be a real disaster, we need to make a serious commitment. This is a serious situation. They don't care about us. They don't care about us, they don't care about our children, they don't care about our families. All they see is profit. And that's all. They're trying to lock us in, and we don't want to be locked in because the renewable energy is the future. We are now in the twenty-first century. The fossil fuels, that's the eight, that's the nineteenth century. And we've got to get away from that. We have really brought some serious damage to the planet already because of that. Okay, so we had it. Now we got to transition beyond it. And they try and tell us that the pipelines are just a transition? I mean, that's ridiculous. They're going to walk away from billions of dollars of profits because they're going to move over for renewable energy? Especially since they have the infrastructure all laid in? That's never going to happen.
That's time.
Thank you for your time, sir.
I thank you very much.
Please state your name and address and you have five minutes.
Good evening, my name is Stephanie Marquesi Dejane. I'm coming from Maple Street in Perth Amway, Middlesex County. And I am speaking before you tonight as founder and president of a nonprofit, private, secret charity in New Jersey called United Restless Peace. We're based in Perth Amway. And my reason for coming to you tonight is because I have tried time and time again to put a request to hold a lung cancer awareness flag raising at the county level. And I keep getting thrown back and forth between county clerk Elaine of Flynn's office and clerk of the board, her office. And so since I'm getting nowhere, it's been two months since I've been trying, coming to you now. So you might be wondering why lung cancer is important. And for those of you who don't know, which I can say probably most of you, lung cancer is the second most common cancer in men and women all around the world, especially in the United States. It is the leading cause of cancer deaths, and cancer is the leading cause of natural death. One in fourteen men and one in seventeen women will be diagnosed with lung cancer at some point in their lives. Yet only about five percent of those people will survive past five years from their first diagnosis. Lung cancer unfortunately receives at least some of the government funding. And for those of you who don't know, New Jersey does not give any funding for lung cancer awareness, whether it be events or research. Yet again, New Jersey is one of the most polluted states in the United States, and Middlesex County is one of the most highly polluted counties in the state. And you might be wondering why I'm talking about air pollution? And that's because eighty percent of people who have been diagnosed with lung cancer have never touched a cigarette in their life. The leading cause of lung cancer is between exposure to radon and asbestos and air pollution, which a lot of people don't know that. In 2017, it is estimated that there will be about two hundred twenty-two thousand, five hundred new cases of lung cancer in the United States and one hundred fifty-five thousand, eight hundred and seventy deaths in the United States. Those numbers, bringing it down to New Jersey, turn into five thousand five hundred and forty new lung cancer cases this year, with three thousand seven hundred and sixty people dying of lung cancer this year. For most of you who don't know, lung cancer is usually detected between stage three and four, stage four being known as end stage. And it's also when the doctor tells you, you're going to die because there's nothing they can do for you.
Excuse me, one minute. Did you say that you tried to reach the clerk's office, county clerk's office, to do a flag raising?
Yes.
And she transferred you over to the clerk's, our clerk's office?
Correct.
And there was no response back to you?
No, so I was then thrown back to...
Is there a month, is there a certain month that this National Lung Cancer Awareness Month? What month is that?
So that is November, and the governor has also proclaimed New Jersey as Lung Cancer Awareness Month two years ago.
Now, your organization has a flag?
Yes, so I created and designed a lung cancer flag. It's been raised in Perth Amway for two years, and we're looking to bring that to the county level.
Well, I can tell you that our freeholder Charlie Kenny has been very instrumental in starting our program here in the county as far as flag raisings for various organizations or causes. And I'm sure, I would imagine that that would not be a problem, that we could accommodate that for the month of November.
Okay, so what would be the first way to reach you?
Oh, you write articles for that.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Good evening, once again, Charles Gradwell, New Brunswick, New Brunswick today. I think you know the first question, how much longer do you think until the President of the United States gets impeached?
I don't know, Charlie, I don't know.
Today is six months, six months, that's, that's sad that, that this has been allowed to go on that long, I personally agree.
It's a comedy show. It's a comedy show.
It, it absolutely is, and I, I think...
That's my opinion, I...
It needs to come to an end, and, and I think that the, the way that the founders intended for that to come to an end was...
Was turning over their graves.
Was impeachment, so I've reached out to Congressman Malone on Twitter, asking him to do the right thing and sign on to the article of impeachment that has been introduced, and currently has a couple sponsors in Congress. I imagine you guys probably have a little more pull with Congressman Malone than I do, and perhaps other congressmen and congresswomen. Please, please use your power to try to encourage them to do the right thing, impeach the President of the United States, and, while there, and the governor of New Jersey too. I, I do want to raise a serious concern, this is another meeting where we don't have the sheriff, or we don't have the prosecutor here, and it came out today that the prosecutor's office appears to have misled the public, appears to have lied to the public regarding the death of a man named Daniel Nagahama, who died in police custody on June 2nd, 2016. And the prosecutor's office put out a statement two days later, it's still available on the county website, that said that Mr. Nagahama was not under arrest, but today, after a lawsuit, the use of force reports were released and shows all four officers that were involved in using force against him, force that had not previously been disclosed, all them thought that he was under arrest, and they did mark that he had been arrested. So, I'm concerned that the prosecutor's not here to be held accountable for the statements his office has made. I, I think this is, it doesn't get any more serious than when there's been a loss of life in custody here, and I, I believe that there's video of this, will the county release the video?
I don't know who would have that video.
Prosecutor's office sure, sure would.
Well then, I, I would imagine that you would have to make an Oprah request to the prosecutor's office.
I would surely do that, and I hope that they do the right thing and release it under the recent Supreme Court decision. I, I'm, I'm, I'm really upset about this, and I'd like to, to hear, has anybody looked into this, has anybody seen the video on the freeholder board, or what happened?
I haven't.
Charlie, I actually wasn't aware of this issue.
Okay, this was yeah, last summer, Mr. Nagahama was in Highland Park, police apparently used their hands and fists on him, and also one of the officers used a chemical agent, and then he passed away. And they conveniently left out the fact that they used their hands and fists and used chemical agent on him, and apparently lied about whether or not he was under arrest. I think the Middlesex County prosecutor owes the public an explanation, and I hope that he will come to the next meeting and explain himself. I'm also very disturbed by a video that was released out of Carteret, where a police officer was captured on video beating up a 16-year-old who had just been in a car crash. Can the freeholders say anything about this to reassure the public that the police aren't going to abuse children?
That, that's going to trial, I, I understand, and the trial's over, you'll get your, your answers of what the outcome is, I, I can't make a comment on that.
Did you watch the video?
No.
Okay, I would, especially since I know you're from the same town, Carteret, I would hope you would want to watch that video, and I know it can be hard to watch, but, you know, there's a reason that towns are getting body cameras, and the, the reason is that because sadly, law enforcement doesn't always tell the truth about what happens, and having an independent account from a video camera can help the public see both when the police are doing the right thing and when they're not doing the right thing, and I encourage you to watch this video, and I encourage you to watch the video, if you can get your hands on it, of what happened with Mr. Nagahama in Highland Park. And I'll, I'll move on, briefly, I'm going to say I support everything everybody said about the pipeline, we don't need another explosion in Middlesex County, and I think we need to take strong stance against this, so I, I hope you'll, you'll keep moving in that direction. Is the Ethics Board going to do anything about the complaint that I brought you in the last meeting?
That's fine.
Can you answer that? Is the Ethics Board going to take any action based on the complaint? I submit, I haven't heard anything.
I'm sure that they would, I just don't know the detail of how they, how they will be handled by the government, but they have to, strongly, you file complaints, and they have to respond to them.
Okay, I hope they do it before December, the next meeting's not scheduled until December, I'm shooting. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Motion to close.
Second.
Motion to close by Bill Candy, second by Bill Valente, on favor.
I.
Close, motion carried, motion returned.
Second.